Selecting all this meeting's words. Ms. Byron, may I have a roll call please?
Ms. Anderson?
Here.
Ms. Dawson?
Here.
Ms. Harrington?
Here.
Ms. Pinter?
Here.
Mr. Ricky?
Here.
And Chair of the Board of Directors, the President of the Board.
May we give him the pledge, please?
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dr. Mortimer, are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes ma'am, we considered bringing recognition forward before we go into closed session. For the sake of the audience, I think I might be done officially this evening.
Do you have a motion to accept the agenda?
Move to approve.
Do you have a second? All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Alright.
Alright, thank you ma'am. The Chair members of the board, we're gonna start this evening. We're gonna have Ms. Schumate from Gordon Barber. Randy? Please come forward.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity. I'd like to recognize my connect team tonight, so if they would come forward. We have Ms. Lauren Pack, our art teacher. Ms. Michaela Paxton, our music teacher. Ms. Abby Yow, our PE teacher. Ms. Emily Ligonthoman, also known as Ms. LH, our librarian. And Ms. Kristy Gibson, our technology teacher. It is my honor to recognize this group tonight. They're a very special group in our building. And I want to share with you something that they pulled off and we together worked on about a few weeks, several weeks ago. GDES invited students, parents, and family to join us for an event at Gordon Barber known as the GDES Connect Showcase. Our hallways were filled with excitement as our Bulldogs entered eagerly to show off their Connect creations to family members. Ms. Pack, our art teacher, spent countless hours, days, weeks, probably months, creating and ensuring that every student at GDES had a piece of artwork on formal display. In our new addition, there were tables with white, beautiful covers lined with them, and formal artwork by each and every one of our students on display. In our new addition, there were also gallery walks for families to be able to view their students' artwork and also purchase at a very small price. Ms. Pack had decorated our breezeway with hanging art pieces that the students had created, beautifully painted fabrics and paper designs. In Ms. Yow's gym, which was turned into an art gallery, there were more tables of artwork and standing displays, creating another opportunity for families to view their students' creativity and talent. From work done with Clay Nation and stop-motion video in our technology class with Ms. Gibson, clay figures and props were set up along the art tables with QR codes for families to scan and see the entire student-created videos come to life. On large TVs in the breezeway and main lobby, students' stop-motion videos including music, titles, and credits were being played for our families to view. Ms. LH worked tirelessly, even coming in on a day off, an unscheduled day off, to help set up our spring book fair and make sure it was on display in the library, ready for families to stop in throughout the night. Our singing Bulldogs put on a beautiful performance in the gym at 6:00 PM under the direction of our music teacher, Ms. Michaela Paxton. This event brought hundreds, and I'm not exaggerating, hundreds of people into our building to admire and recognize the talents of our students who became artists, singers, readers, and animators. This type of event would not have been possible without the weeks and months of advanced planning and coordination that had to take place amongst this entire Connect staff. They worked together seamlessly to ensure students were well rehearsed, projects were given adequate time to be completed, they altered Connect schedules when needed to give students extra time and support in project completion, they supported one another with sharing spaces like turning our gym into an art gallery and a performance venue. Students traveled to library on gym days, general music days, technology on art days, and so on, whatever it took to ensure that every student was represented that night. I'm so appreciative and honored to work alongside this Connect team, who consistently worked together to provide meaningful Connect experiences to our students, and who worked to ensure that our families have an opportunity to be involved in that as well. If it weren't for Ms. Pack and our holidays around the world, Ms. Yow currently working on her field day, Ms. LH who runs our announcements each and every morning, even when I'm running at the last minute, to join our part, Ms. Gibson who has probably packed a pack of and popped 900 bags of popcorn this year, and Ms. Pack sitting her singing Bulldogs and her musicals that she's put on. Because of them, they connect our students to our GDES community, and I really thank and welcome ourselves to them.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Eileen Oliver Egger. I'm the Principal at Lucas Grove Elementary School, and this is the Assistant Principal, Ms. Sonya Walsh. And we're here to recognize two of our fifth grade teachers. Could I have Ms. Christina Shutter and Ms. Stacy Rubley come forward? So, while Sonya and I make up the school leadership team, there's definitely a lot of leaders that are in the role of teachers throughout the buildings, and these two are two of the key teacher leaders in our school. In these days of teacher shortages, one of my fifth grade teams has had an interim teacher and a few different long-term substitutes on the team, and these two teachers have been leaders, mentors, and cheerleaders for our inexperienced folks who have had to come into the role of fifth grade teachers. They have been able to lesson plan and support and mentor these new teachers so that the instruction was seamless for our fifth grade students who were on the team. Without these two and their support and their veteran leadership, the instruction would not have been as high-quality as it was for our fifth graders. So these two were critical in the success of the instruction for our fifth grade on the team. These two also are lead teachers. Ms. Shutter is our science lead, and Ms. Rubley is our language arts lead, and so they have leadership roles beyond their grade level, leading the curriculum for the entire school in those content areas. We couldn't be more thankful for the leadership and guidance and positivity that these two bring at Lucas Grove Elementary, and so we thank you from the bottom of our hearts for your leadership and positivity and support in holding the grade level and your content together. So thank you so much.
Hello, good evening. I am so pleased to be here tonight to honor and recognize one of my most talented students, I'd have to say, in my career. I am so happy tonight to introduce to you Skylar O'Gerry. She is the recipient of an award that Orange County Public Schools has never received before. She, actually, her painting won first place in the 7th District of the Congressional Art Competition. This is a very prestigious competition that is held across the nation, and each district has a representative, the winner, who then goes on to be recognized at an awards banquet in Washington DC this summer, I believe in June, and her painting will be on display at the Capitol Building in Washington DC for a whole year. Her painting, if you didn't get a chance to see on social media, is a beautiful oil painting of a scene that, actually, if you want to talk about it a little bit, you might too? Go ahead, Kelly.
So the scene was inspired by, I was actually in DC last summer, and I was walking right outside the National Gallery of Art, and there was a tree that just, I guess beautifully captured the sunlight and the way that the shadow was casted on the sidewalk just kind of inspired me. So I took a photo and I painted it about six months later, but I still felt like it was a beautiful thing to bring to me.
So we are so proud of her, and she is a perfect representation of the talent that we have at Orange County High School and in Orange County Public Schools, such beautiful artistic talent we have here. So congratulations to Skylar.
Thank you, Dr. Mortimer, Madam Chair, members of the board. Tonight I'll come before you to recognize Mr. Brian Crane. But first, a little background. When I joined the team here at OCPS in August of 2020, Brian was doing an awesome job as our facility's supply manager. However, when the work was done, in times where slow, Brian began to assist the previous electrician that was on staff here in facilities. Together, they completed many electrical repairs and upgrades throughout our facilities. Very shortly after our ride during the same year, Brian changed positions at central office and became our sole electrician. I learned when I arrived here at OCPS that Brian had previous electrical background as a lineman earlier in life, and was currently enrolled in the electrician program at Charlesville Haverhill Technical Education Center, also known as K-Tech, where he took classes during the evening after work. This effort went on for several semesters. Well, after four years of hard work, I bring before you Mr. Brian Crane, Master Electrician. The value of having such an asset in-house saves OCPS thousands of dollars each year and provides a safe environment to our students and staff. Mr. Arnold and I cannot think, cannot count enough on how many times we have utilized Brian's strength and knowledge to make solid decisions with electrical repairs and lighting upgrades for our facilities. Brian's a true Orange County with deep roots in OCPS, and is a proud graduate of William Park. Please join me in congratulating Brian on his great accomplishment.
Alright, good morning. Alright. Good morning, members of the board, and it is my pleasure and honor to recognize Erin Dornell and Sharon Mormon for the creation of OES Student Council Association, but it wouldn't be right just to recognize them. We also have to recognize the 37 members that make up the SCA. So I just want to go through some accomplishments, some fundraisers, community service projects. These were the foundations for when we created this Student Council Association, and we really wanted our students to have a voice in it, but they needed someone to lead. So I asked Sharon Mormon and Erin Dornell if they would take the lead on that, and they have gone far and above any expectations. So some of the accomplishments, the students had a voice to where they had to select their president, their vice president, their secretary, and treasurer. Ms. Dornell created a Google form where the students were able to vote on students, but then they were also able to listen to speeches, just so we were able to get some instructional time. We had an installation ceremony, which involved the high school student government, so giving them an opportunity to lead the next generation of Orange County students. They chose games for the Blacktop for the OCPS Day of Service. They coordinated that with all the classrooms to get their feedback, and through some of their community service projects, we were able to reach farther than Orange County. They had a socktober event to collect socks that were donated to many organizations around Orange, but so many socks were created, we had to send some out. There were 4,108 pairs of socks collected just in the month of October alone. For a food drive, they did a Super Bowl. They collected 1,182 pounds of food and was donated to the local food pantry. They also collected plastic to keep it out of our landfill, and through this plastic create or collected, they're able to get a free bench donated by Trex. Through those community service projects, NBC 29 News actually caught a hold of this story and came out to OES to interview the students. But through SCA, our news broadcasters, through Chita Nation News, Gap2Experience, NBC News Live, and so that was really cool for them to see the experience of creating a piece, editing the piece, but then also talking to a reporter live. It's just one of those experiences that if Ms. Dornell and Ms. Mormon weren't there, that the students may not have had it that time. The students had to attend SCA meetings once a month, and I can tell you, 8 o'clock on a Monday is not the easiest thing if you're a fifth grader, fourth grader, or third grader. So the attendance was great. They partnered with a class from K-5 and had to provide information that was presented in those meetings, get feedback, bring it back to the advisors, and then they had to make the decisions. The advisors also created action teams through surveys to try to put them in a specific part in which they were going to be successful, and through that, they created a legacy project, and I don't, can I say what it is? Okay. So the students, we really focused on that legacy piece, on when you leave OES, what is going to be your mark? And so they decided, as a group, to have a school newspaper, and it would be the first one in OES history, which I'm really excited about. Yes. So through the leadership, and when I said, "You're gonna lead," they went farther, and I couldn't imagine where we would, where we would be without them. And so, like I said, Sharon Mormon and Erin Dornell, thank you. Thank you for giving our students an opportunity to lead and showcasing what they can do. So we have several members here. These students are involved in a lot of things, so not all over here, but 37 members of OES are a part of this group. So when I call your names, come on up. In third grade, we have Lula Blaine, who is also our treasurer, Amber Lynn Lott, Delaney Honn, Harper Green, Lawson Jacobs, Latimah Kabir, Kaye Melvin, Elliot Miller, Joel Parks, Colin Smith, Murphy Stover. We have Ziva Busker, Grayson Harbinder, Isaac Foster, Cooper Porter, Leila Raglin, Kara Sparts, Adam Suther, Lilian Taylor, Marjorie Velasco Cortez, and those are our fourth graders. For our fifth grade, we have Sarah Grace Blaine, Devin Lott, Assalia Lundberg, William Quatro, Mariana Dakins, Colin Feldman, and along with being the fifth grader, he is also the vice president of the Student Council Association. Al Turner, Levi Hoover, Landon Jacobs, Bristol Gore, who is our secretary, Benjamin LaBelle, Scarlett Manche, Owen Mullin, Harmony Taylor, Maddie Van Horn, and our president and leader of Student Council Association, Natalie Williams.
Good evening, and thank you so much for this opportunity to recognize a great group of students. So we have another Orange County first. I'd first like to, if you're a member of the SCA, if you all would please stand. This year, Orange County High School was the Region 4 Representative School for the Virginia Student Council Association. Jackson Hamilton, our president, was the student representative. We were able to host a workshop at James Madison's Montpelier. I would also like to recognize Sarah Wildes, who is our second vice president. Could you guys come forward when I point your hand? Yeah. Gabe Rupner is the student council secretary. Sam Rosia is the senior class president. And I know that the other executive officers are also, I'll go ahead and say, Carrie Kessler was our vice president. The senior class treasurer was Molly Yowell. The senior class vice president was Kayden Schiff, and I would say the senior leadership along with Sarah brought us the recognition to get the Virginia Association of Student Council's Achievement Award in recognition of the outstanding work of the Student Council Association in promoting leadership and community service. So the student council also, I'm very proud to say, we were so thrilled to go to OES, but I'd like to give the next award. Jackson Hamilton has been a fabulous leader, and I always worried when I have a great one leaving, but Sarah has already stepped up and will be next year's student body president. So I really look forward to that. We did many projects, and the one that really tipped the iceberg to get us, to give us the next award I'm going to speak about, we collected macaroni and cheese, and we agreed that if we could get enough boxes that Mr. Price would wear a macaroni and cheese box that was oversized. Skylar helped design the box. So Skylar is also a part of the SCA. Some of the other things that the student council did, we were part of the Virginia School Consortium for Learning, and they have come up with a plan to try to reinstate peer mediation and peer mentoring. They've helped her back to school night, the elementary election, all of the homecoming events, including spirit days, halftime, the parade. We've also made donations to the Division of Social Services so that we could provide Thanksgiving meals for families. We provided Senior Santa's gifts to Dogwood Village. We also provided gifts to social services. We helped Jackson with a mock election. We, although we're formal though, we collected canned goods and made a donation to the Outreach Food Pantry. We also did egg hunt. We just put on prom. We hosted a regional workshop, like I said, at James Madison. We also have hosted the Virginia Student Council's Advisory Committee at Orange. We received the achievement award, and the last big award that we received is the 2024 National Council of Excellence by the National Association of Student Councils for its exemplary record of leadership, service, and activities that served to improve the school and the community, and this was given by the NASP, the National Association of Secondary School Principals. With any of the rest of you, you guys are SCA members. Come on up. So the entire student body is a member of the SCA. Alright, so the next group of people, and it's going to seem overwhelming, and we usually are overwhelmed. We just survived the weekend of that. The Technology Student Association is one of, every one of these students has, is taking a technology engineering class, and again, they're not all here tonight. So the first group is the aerial drone competition group, and last semester, I wrote a grant. NASA actually funded it, and we received six drones, and all of them were destroyed. So I had to really buy another drone, and I took this group of students, and I will call their names. Alexander Williams, if you guys could come forward, please. Tessa Smith, Robert Driscoll, Cole Callahan, Jacob Mills, Kyle Lyon, Cooper Rosia, Gabriel Ramirez, Vince Anderson, Christopher Chavez, DJ Snyder, Deacon Barfield, Sam Barfield, and Janelle Bowles. Hayden Erb, go on up as well. So Hayden and Janelle were really the, they had me last semester, and they figured out a way to set up a 40 by 40 maybe foot. forty by forty maybe foot practice area out of PVC pipe. And we did it in sections. They practiced in the robotics class, certain parts of these three missions. The first one was a piloting mission where they had to knock balls off of pillars. The second part was a team mission, they were teamed up with another drone. And then the last part was autonomous and actually Jacob and Vince wrote a lot of autonomous programming. Our main pilot, who's ranked nationally now, Joseph Atrion, he had a voice scout meeting tonight, wasn't worried about anything. We showed up and I actually brought a huge team and I invited them to four squads and they didn't know who they were teamed with until we got there. So the way that it worked out, Tessa, Joseph, Alex, and Cole, I believe, were on the team together. And part of the flight, the pilot cannot see part of the flight. Tessa, who's the shortest person on the team, was the co-pilot for Joe, who was the tallest person on the team. And it actually worked, so we would not separate them. The mission was called Full Eclipse, coincidentally. And that group of students ended up as a team. Some of you have heard this story before, Alex is our electrician. And the NASA engineers were a little bit bothered because Alex decided he needed to solder some parts in the research center. Robert is also going to be a programmer for us when we go on. So what happened was they ended up getting teamed up with a middle school and they won the team's mission. And the judges were so impressed by all of them. And how many of you flew a drone that day? So I just said, just fly, I don't care, play the game, let's just have fun. Well, they had so much fun that they won. And the judges were so impressed by them, you guys didn't bring your awards up with you, you got them. Then NASA actually gave them an award that they usually don't give out, the judges' award. Because of how professional that they were and their problem-solving abilities. So, I don't know, how many drones you repaired? Two, okay. So I'd like to congratulate them because not only did they receive the judges' award, they will be traveling to Fairmont State University graduation weekend. So the seniors aren't going to compete in the Northeast Regionals. So, Orange County High School, first ever aerial drone team. I'm also going to mention, there's a picture of Janelle. The governor went to Langley the day before the competition. And every team that was entering was given the opportunity to submit a web question. We couldn't travel that day, they picked Janelle's question. So, and the funny thing was the engineer that actually answered her question through this webinar was there the next day and I went up to him and said, you answered our question. And so he was very impressed with the question, Janelle, what was it?
Um, how do drones get back to the launch?
Yeah. And of course, if you ask an aerospace engineer, a PhD, that question, you're going to get a long answer. I never realized that the governor had an engineering degree until that time. He actually flew a drone and we weren't very impressed. I don't think he's going to bet, he'll remember that. So the next thing, the same group of students, and they're different, I'll call them back up if you participated in this particular event, was the Regional Technology Student Association Competition at Thomas Jefferson High School for Science and Technology. Unfortunately, Orange County and Student Councils in the Northern Region for Superintendent. And we're in the Northern Region for Technology Student Association. So our first big competitor is the number one school in the country for technology and engineering. But, we always do very well. So, at this time, let me call forward Vince Anderson. He participated in manufacturing prototype and systems control. Hayden Irving, who participated and got eleventh place in architectural CAD architecture. Kyle Lyon, and Kyle is the TSA president. He participated in CAD engineering and was part of the board game design team that came in twelfth place. Jacob Mills was also part of the systems control team and was part of the manufacturing prototype. Systems control came in eighth place. Gabe Ramirez was part of the video game design team. Robert Driscoll was part of the manufacturing prototype. Henry Olson was part of the video game design team. And Alexander Williams was, let me also say that Gabe, Alex, and Kyle are our officers. Gabe's the secretary, Alex is the vice president. Alex participated in systems control. Students that aren't here that also participated, we entered music production. Which, it's interesting to see what the judges said. But anyway, these were people that all placed in the top twenty, could I leave anybody out? So top twenty at the TSA Regional Competition at Thomas Jefferson School for Science and Technology. And I do want to add this, while we're at it. Alright, so the last group of students just came back this past weekend and we competed in architecture design, coding, forensic science, on-demand video, software development, VEX robotics, technology bowl, which was in the top eight, we're not sure what their place was. The defending state champion, who was the state champion this year, did defeat them in round two. And then the drone challenge team placed third, which is very tough. And so I included a picture of the cage there and then the group of students. So when I call your name, if you could please come forward. Joe, again, the drone pilot is not here, Janelle Bowles, Jackson Hamilton, Hayden Irving, Kyle Lyon, Jacob Mills, Henry Olson, Chandler Poppy, Gabe Ramirez, and Alexander Williams. So I would also like to thank, this is Jillian Mills, if you would please rise, went with us and was a chaperone. And she can attest to the fact that these children now, I will tell you, were there competing in multiple events. Multiple events. Joe had drones in VEX, Janelle drone and on-demand video. Jackson, even though he was on the technology bowl, he went over the rubrics that everybody had to follow for every single competitive, that was in the rubric. Hayden Irving, who is going to be studying law enforcement, said I want to do forensics. I said, okay, I don't know anything about it, looks fine, the rubric. He and Chandler had to take a test, along with the technology bowl, they had to take a test before you can actually go to the physical competitions. And Hayden said he could tell the policeman did not write the test. He was also part of the technology bowl and the on-demand video. Kyle Lyon was part of the VEX team and actually ended up doing it pretty much solo because both VEX was going on, drones were going on. Jacob Mills was also drone and VEX, but he had to leave VEX and then run over to drones. He was also part of the on-demand video. Henry Olson, for the first time as a freshman, came on and he and Alex were part of the coding team. Alex, what was the language that you guys didn't know anything about that Jackson tried to discuss with you?
Assembly.
Assembly, something with an M. Modulus.
Modulus, oh yeah.
Yes, modulus. Okay, so of course they got into a big discussion of that. If you want to know anything about flux capacitors, ask Alex. Apparently, there was a big discussion on the way home about flux capacitors.
It wasn't that big.
It wasn't. Alright, so that too, we'll be back to Alex again because Henry and Alex were a part of software development. But, and I'm sure Alex's poor mother about had a heart attack, Alex ordered stuff from China that had to get delivered to Reagan that had to be, whatever that courier company is, drove it to his house, his father jumped on the motorcycle and Mr. Jamerson waited for him at high school, drove it to Hampton so that we could keep him software development. Alex thought he needed to build the hardware. But we're very fortunate that we had Alex because when the drone motors broke, we had to rip the drones apart and who do you think soldered the motors back to the board? Alex. So I was afraid we were going to catch a fire, Alex and I went outside on the sidewalk. It started raining and it was going to rain, what, your bathroom has a stone saying, I'll go in there with you, we'll turn on the exhaust fan. We were able to compete. The drones did crash multiple times.
They crashed two of the exons, we took them apart to make them.
Okay. But, so Gabe was also on drones, VEX, and on-demand video. And like I said, Alex did technology bowl along with Hayden and Jackson, coding, software development. And I'm going to say this, I am the president-elect for the Virginia Technology and Engineering Education Association and my state director got up and said, thank you all for being so brave. And here we are, Orange County High School, competing against Maggie Walker, Thomas Jefferson School of Science and Technology, Vance Technology Center in Virginia Beach. And I'm going to tell you a story and I think parents need to hear this. There was a mother sitting beside me and her daughter's teacher actually went to college with my husband and I. And I said, oh, you know, where does your daughter go to school? And she said, Advanced Technology. So, long story short, she said, I hope she places in the top ten. She's been working on this architectural project since October. And at that center, they go pretty much all day long. Hayden didn't start the model of the architectural project until Tuesday. And that girl did not place in the top ten. Anyway, so Hayden, they just, these kids are so great and they're willing to take a risk. I want to thank parents for pushing them. And I'm going to tell you, they're all leaders. And thank you, parents, because a leader is nothing without its roots. And you all have really, and when they get upset, it's not upset. And Jackson, of course, wasn't happy about technology bowl, but you learned from that. And I let them fail and I said that to you guys, but I'm not going to let them get humiliated. So when we get to the point that I'm like, Alex, go ask the bartender, we'll go down there, we'll get a piece of Reynolds Wrap so that we don't catch something on fire. We did that, really, and she likes that, so we're on that. I don't want to rap, anyway. So, I do, I thank the parents for encouraging their children. Orange County Public Schools does a great job with career technical education. We also got the Sentry Award. So Janelle's holding a third place in the state Drone Challenge Award. But the Sentry Award, because, and we're very many schools that got it, we have a huge number of students that participate in these events. So I want to congratulate all of them and I want to congratulate the parents and then the other people that are on the drone team and TSA for all the time that you've spent and being so devoted and knowing that it's never too late to start over. So congratulations. They did qualify to go to Nationals in Orlando. So that was in Virginia.
Boy, if y'all could introduce me, just a minute, there's one more person I think we need to recognize here. I've been very fortunate as a first-year principal to be able to work alongside a professional like Lori Jamerson. And I just want to give y'all a quick overview of what I've seen this year and some of the accomplishments she's done. You know, let's start with Russia, an amazing poem that this lady, single-handedly organized, put together, recruited, and pulled off for our students, which was an amazing event. You heard about the winter poem? Well, she afforded the opportunity to raise money for her clubs so that she could collect, her clubs could collect food for our local food bank because they were having a shortage of macaroni and cheese. So, that was one thing. And this year, Mr. Jamerson has been recognized by a few things. And I'd like to call your attention to some of the honors and recognition Mr. Jamerson has received this year. She received the Orange County Educational Lifetime Contribution Award from the Educational Foundation. She was the Orange County Christmas Parade Grand Marshall this year. The Virginia Student Council Advisor of the Year. The Garvis Huff Award for Outstanding Youth Advocate. Virginia Technological and Engineering Education Association President-elect, and this is a three-year term. And the Virginia Association for Career Technical Education Executive Board Member. Board members, I'm really proud to be, to work alongside such a professional as Lori Jamerson. And I just wanted to stand up here and tell y'all how happy I am to be able to have that honor. And with Orange County, it's very fortunate to have someone of her caliber working with our students. And with Orange County, it's very fortunate to have someone of her caliber working with our students.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Ms. Jay, students, all Barbara Siphians, congratulations. Thank you all very much.
Thank you all again for the presentation tonight. Remember, it's a very, very important day.
Real quick, Miss Shoemake, wonderful job, terrific teachers. I'm inspired, absolutely inspired. When we see you and some of the other principals that come present, bring these young people and the commitment that they have to the students of Orange County Public Schools, it's all inspiring. I was not aware that we were very, a county that is so art-related, so that's wonderful. Mr. Jerry, wow, what an unbelievable honor. What building is it hanging in?
The U.S. Capitol.
The U.S. Capitol. I know your mother is quite proud, quite proud. And Ms. Jay, where's Ms. Jay? Yeah. Wow. Thanks for, I'll just ditto what Mr. Price said. Thanks for, you were developing the leaders for business and industry for tomorrow. And I thank you for that. And every person in Orange County needs to know that you do that and you keep Mike busy as well, so.
I think Jack said it all, but I also want to highlight Dr. Hornick for bringing this initiative back to Orange County. This is an amazing opportunity to be able to see what the student and staff are both doing. And it really brings what we do to life. So it's great to see the inner workings and what's going on in Orange County Public Schools.
And I'll just say ditto too. It's impressive, it's a joyful event tonight to hear all of these wonderful things that are happening and I appreciate it so much. And I'd like to see the macaroni and cheese box. It's on the national website, I'm sorry.
Thank you all. Close session certification, Chair.
Can I request a five-minute recess to allow those who wish to?
Absolutely. We'll have five-minute recess. Call this meeting back to order. Sorry for this slight delay. Ms. Dawson, close session certification, please.
Pursuant to 2.2-3711A of the Code of Virginia, the Orange County School Board will convene a closed meeting for the following. Discussion of personnel or the performance of a division employee as authorized by Section 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of Virginia for resignation, termination, transfer, employment, salary adjustment, evaluation, and retirement of employees.
May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Sorry, we're in closed session now. I'd like to call this meeting back to order. Ms. Dawson, may I have a close session certification?
Whereas the Orange County School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And whereas 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia required certification by this school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved that the Orange County School Board shall certify that to the best of each member's knowledge. One, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed. And two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered.
May I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Byram, may I have a word?
Mrs. Jamerson?
Aye.
Mrs. Dawson?
Aye.
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 Madam Chair, the purpose of the I think is about which time yes, but.
Thank you. Dr. Hornick, deposition person.
Yes, ma'am, recommend approval of the items in closed session as presented. And afterwards, if you guys wouldn't mind, we'd like to introduce our new assistant principal as well.
I should that we recommend approval of the personnel agenda to include retirement, resignation, employment, and transfer of staff and certified and classified staff renewals.
Second.
All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. It brings me great pleasure this evening to introduce our newest administrator in Orange County Public Schools, Ms. Caitlin Fink, who is here this evening with her family. And she is incredibly honored to be the new assistant principal at Orange Elementary School. She's really looking forward to the upcoming school year to work with motivated students and staff and the community at OES. So over the course of her career, she's worked as a kindergarten teacher, a team leader, a PBI ex-coach and mentor. She graduated grad from university with a bachelor's degree in interdisciplinary studies. She continued on to give her masters in elementary education and early childhood special education, correct? And then in 2022, you completed your Ed specialist degree in administrative, administration and supervision from ODU. So congratulations, Caitlin. Her husband, Daniel, who is here, and our high school sweethearts and have lived in Orange for the last six years. They have an eight-month-old baby, beautiful baby boy. He is excited to be here tonight. An eight-year-old beagle named Lucy and twenty chickens, believe it or not. And in their spare time, they enjoy riding ATV, spending time with friends and family and traveling to new places. I will tell you that Mr. Johnson implemented a significantly rigorous and thoughtful process to take an incredibly large poll of candidates, probably our strongest applicant poll that we have right now. And so he was very thorough, very competitive. And I know that he is very excited as well, beginning his journey as principal at OES to be welcoming his new assistant principal, Ms. Caitlin Fink. Caitlin, congratulations. We love to have you come up here today. Congratulations, Caitlin. Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the board.
Thank you. Thank you.
I just want to say congratulations. Thank you. And how long have you been with us? I didn't catch that one part, Dr. Hornick.
I've been teaching in Orange for the past four years and we live in Orange for six.
Wonderful, wonderful, good. Congratulations. Would like to, Mr. Finger, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
It's worked hard to get here.
Yeah, thank you. And I seem to be saying this a lot, right, Mr. Johnson? Dr. Wolfrey, thank you again. Continuing to look at the people that we have here investing in them and showing a path for. Dr. Wolfrey, outstanding as always. Mr. Johnson said some good things about your process, so you should be quite proud.
Thank you.
And Mom's dead, of course.
All right, moving on to consent agenda, minutes and financial reports. May I have a motion to approve?
I'll motion that we approve the minutes from the January 29th, 2024 and February 5th, 2024 meetings and the April 2024 financial report as well as the monthly school matrician fund report.
Second.
All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. All right, monthly operating bills. Have a motion to approve or is there any questions? So I do have a question, actually, I was reviewing them. And. So at the end of the report, there's a, I believe it's the 419-2024. There's a gazebo. Where did you put this gazebo? It was a, it was exactly the last item listed on the report. And.
Here comes, though.
It says 26,471, 20. And it says Amish Country Gazebos LLC.
That is actually a metal-roofed outdoor structure from which we received a grant.
Okay.
So that is entirely grant-funded. And as a matter of fact, I'm not going to get into too much detail, but we are planning to install it up at the upper fields of Prospect Heights.
Oh, okay.
This is our, this is our outdoor, I'm sorry, I was getting stuck on that. This is our outdoor learning facility as well as our modular restaurants that you all work through to, from the Estor funding.
Together as part of the same grant.
Ah, I get it, okay.
In that the restroom was over a hundred thousand required board approval.
Gotcha, yeah.
But they're both.
So, and I'm just curious because it said gazebo and I was, you know, working with you put it because I wanted to see it.
Thank you.
Thank you, sorry.
Madam Chair, I took proof that April 2024 operating bills in the amount of $6,616,468.36.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
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 All right, so we have recognitions out of the way, on to public comment. Ms. Byram, do you have anybody?
Yes, we have six people.
Would like to open public comment, please?
I'll call them up two at a time. We've got Donovan Upchurch and Henry Olson. Mr. Upchurch or Mr. Olson? Okay. Next would be Jackson Hamilton and Laura Day.
Okay, so first of all, thank you tonight for recognizing Ms. Jamerson and everyone with SCA and TSA. I appreciate all of the support that you have either provided to these clubs. But I would like to bring to your attention the fact that at Orange County High School, clubs still really have been struggling to meet. I thought this would be better after last year when we tried to include something about club time in the strategic plan under the Safe Growing Environment Action Team. But once again, this school year, club time has been canceled many days. For those who don't know, club time is on Fridays each week and it rotates between blue and orange clubs. And last school year, it was canceled many days for unknown reasons. And this school year, it's been canceled, I would estimate, about half of the possible days primarily because teachers have been unable, because the principal has been unable to find coverage for teachers. And so while this is an understandable issue, it is problematic that club time keeps getting canceled because there are so many clubs like SCA and TSA that have trouble getting new members like students who aren't already involved to join and get involved with their activities, especially when they're involved in so much else outside of school. And so having club time be held as infrequently as it is really makes it difficult for these and other clubs like National Honor Society to actually meet and to plan their activities. And so I was talking with Ms. Jamerson about this and she suggested that having club time on Wednesdays would actually be better because there are generally less teachers out on Wednesday and Fridays are actually the days with the most teachers out, usually without subs. And so if club days on Wednesdays instead, they likely would be able to be canceled less often because there would be more coverage. And we also discussed that it would be better, if possible, to have them on Wednesdays and to extend the time to be an hour instead of half an hour by slightly trimming the time for other classes on Wednesdays just because half an hour once a week is really not enough time for many of these clubs to meet. Thank you.
Good evening. Recently, we were made aware of several incidences that have happened at the high school, including rude actions and derogatory comments in a classroom topped with an unprofessional conduct from a high school teacher. Not only did it disturb me as a parent, it was deeply disheartening to hear as a human, especially the lack of appropriate immediate response from the school, the school administration, and ultimately this school board. I have since heard that these issues have been addressed to some parties immediately involved. But this school board needs to realize that there is a very real problem here in our schools. And it doesn't matter how many good things that happen and that we do. If we always, like, if we don't address these bad things, these bad things are, we're always going to be as good as our bad parts. So we need to work better. Which leads me to the next thing or two. Ms. Quinton and Ms. Anderson sat there and told the public that the school board members would not address the public during school board meetings or during public comment. But yet this, and directed the public to email the school board members and that you guys would respond by email. It's been over a month and I still have not gotten a response from any of you. Instead of focusing on the things that we should be focusing on, such as supporting our students and supporting our staff members, you guys are sitting up there arguing over stupid things and wasting our time. One of the things that you guys could be focusing on is one of your legacy teachers that is getting ready to retire had several requests when Dr. Hornick started here. And that was to get a kiln in each of the school systems so that our teachers are not driving these, our kids' art projects from the elementary schools to either the high school or to the middle school to get them cooked so that they wouldn't be destroyed. He estimated at that time it would cost about $5,000. And that he had already already raised maybe half, close to half? I don't know if you remember, Dr. Hornick. But close to at least half, he's contributed some of this. And yet you guys still have not supported this. I hope that the school board finds it in themselves to focus on what they should be doing. Address our problems. Derogatory terms are disheartening and damaging to our students. It doesn't matter how many good programs we have. If we don't give the students what they need and the staff what we need, it doesn't matter, again, how many good programs that we have. I will continuously stand up here and beg you guys, support these students, support the staff, support the schools. Thank you.
The next two speakers are Alan Daniel and Ken Watson.
Dr. Hornick and school board members, I wanted to come and join you today, this evening, to voice some concerns that I have on a few issues. First issue I want to address are two incidences that happened during last month's public comment. Not one, but two. First issue I want to address are two incidences that happened during last month's public comment. Not one, but two speakers started addressing the audience and not the board. One of whom physically turned away from the board when doing so. Did the chair address it? No, she did not. Kind of interesting that this was not addressed at the time, despite it being a topic of discussion. It makes me wonder, is it because the chairperson, Anderson, cites politically and ideologically with him? It would, it would explain why my wife was used as an example previously and not the others who also previously addressed the audience. I expect the chair to apply policies equally and fairly, which so far in my eyes, she has not. Especially since the board stated that it wasn't a new policy and therefore would have been a policy in effect during last month's public comment. Still related to public comment, why do we not have signups outside the meeting and close signups at three P M? I believe there was Quinter who wanted to close public comment earlier and before signup, uh, before, uh. Signups closing at three P M, but all other boards and O C that I'm aware of allow citizens to sign up on paper before the meeting. Quinter sought to move to the meeting to seven P M to be more accessible to the public, but ironically, public comment was moved to close, signups was moved to close at three P M, which makes public comment less accessible. It never made sense to me outside of the realm of sound and voices, and yes, I had previously been turned away from public comment because of this policy, as I worked too late and missed the cutoff. In my public comment last month, I spoke about the board meeting to focus on issues that actually matter, such as truancy, racism, et cetera. Since then, O V H S has had a white teacher use the N word in a meeting. The same teacher also appears to lack the ability to control their classroom, as a face, just so, just so everyone knows, O's ain't the best word. Has been written on the board. If I said that actual word, Anderson might quick kick me out of this meeting. In addition to this, the same teacher didn't stop students from simulating raping each other, and a video surfaced of someone telling someone to go rape Brian. The teacher does nothing, and apparently, when a student stated that they felt uncomfortable and wanted to leave, the teacher refused to let the student leave. What is going on? I hope this, I hope this is the reason why you had closed session beginning of the meeting to deal with this, whatever this is. I am curious why the teacher doesn't discipline this behavior. I'm expected, am I expected to trust the school board with my son when they're in high school, um, when this is what I hear and see? If a student does what they are supposed to and tells a teacher that they are uncomfortable because of something happening in the classroom and has to leave, why would the teacher not send them the guidance?
Mr. Wabell does not wish to be.
Moving on, um. Dr. Morikawa.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much. I will start this evening with letter A. We want the local special education annual plan. Um, this A was here last week, presented the information. She's available for questions. And so, Madam Chair, members of the board, I'll turn it over to you.
I'm happy to answer any questions about the annual plan.
We all good? Any questions?
I've approved the local special education annual plan as presented, provisions of I D E I A.
Second. All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Great job, as always.
Thank you, Susan. Uh, next, I will bring forward Chris Hill. And I believe E and C both follow you correctly. We have surplus property as well as the, um, approval of C W, if I remember correctly.
Yes.
Crumples.
I've approved the recommendation to acquire the technology, but then a surplus property for disposal.
Second.
All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And Crumples.
Way to go, great.
Thank you.
I was not trying to steal all the thunder tonight. I'm going to approve the recommendation for Chrome Look and Award as well, for a amount of four hundred ninety-one thousand, six hundred thirty dollars.
All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Officer Arnold, come forward. If there are any last remaining questions about the renewal of the Boys and Girls Club Lease C R T.
I do have some comments, um, Madam Chair. I do believe that. As, as space continues to be a issue for Orange County, um, and as we discussed at the last meeting. The agreement really hasn't changed much over the last several years, am I correct?
That's correct.
And so, I think moving forward, um, I believe probably will be the intention of the board tonight to approve. The lease agreement renewal, but I think this is something that we need to seriously consider moving forward. I think that there's a lot of space here that could be used more efficiently at the T, um, building in particular. Um, and so I think that's something that this board should really focus on as we move forward in over the next couple of years.
Um, a couple of questions that I, I think I kind of need to talk about last time, um. I would, I would be curious to see, um, if we could see what the actual cost will be, since all, obviously the increase every time. We haven't renewed the price for a while. We just get that a little bit more closely as to what is actually costing us for the, the amount of space that they use. Because obviously, there's additional space that they're using as well, like the gymnasium, the cafeteria, which is part of it. Um, and then also looking at, um, the, the transportation, obviously. Um, the elementary schools and the, um, the middle schools, they all congregate, wait for the bus to transport them up here for T. Um, so I'm just curious, is, are we accounting for the busing aspect of it as far as the cost in that as well?
Not aware of that. That would be, uh, something that could be addressed, Mr. Sarver, but I do know that. Uh, when we first started the, uh. The current rate. Probably ten years ago, then, right after that, we did the performance contract, and costs in this building actually went down. And then when we did the solar panels, the, uh, cost of electricity has gone down slightly once again. So I don't think we've cut up to the point where we have, where we incurred more cost for the building aspect as we were when we first started the current rate.
I would just be curious to see what the other added expenses are on top of just the building, other than just the building. If you mind, question, but, um, you know, it's, it's. This is the last end of the actual renewal contract that we're going to next year. We can start over with the renewal contract?
We have one more administrative renewal, and then the contract expires in twenty twenty six and can be renegotiated.
Is there anything else?
Move to approve. Lease renewal recommendation for Boys and Girls Club.
I second that.
Second.
All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Um, next, Renee, Dr. Hartwell was here last week. Um, she wasn't able to be with us this evening, seeking approval. Uh, for Orange County Public Schools to continue to participate in the regional migrant education program. Uh, as stated last week, this is, uh, free of cost and is a good service to have should we ever, um, have students that fit this category that need services for.
Move to approve Albemarle Regional Migrant Education Program membership.
Second.
All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Um, next, Judy, if you'd like to come forward. Last week, um, Dr. Wolf, we brought forward a recommendation. To go with Amplify C K L, C K L A, uh, for our textbook adoption. For K five. And I believe, yes, we even have some additional pricing information that you said last week, so I'm glad you wanted to present that to the boards. Judy, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Um, this evening, we're seeking approval to move forward with the contract with Amplify C K L A. Um, again, this is an approximate cost because the cost will vary depending on the number of classrooms that we may have in a given year over the next. Six-year term of the contract, as well as the number of students that we could have at each grade level. So there would be some variance from year to year. Um, but this is an approximate breakdown so that you can see how these funds would be distributed. Um, the teacher materials include everything that's stated for classroom kit, including manipulatives at grades K two. And the student materials are consumable at each grade because there's a very big writing portion. Um, the students can respond to the text and materials. The trade books apply to grades K two. Um, the other grades and the texts are included in the consumables. Um, again, professional development is provided. Particularly in this first year and then to new teachers each year, and then a progress monitoring tool within the program for our students.
Um, Chair, I'd like to approve the purchase of the Amplify Core Knowledge K through five textbooks and training as presented.
You have a second?
Second.
All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your support.
We're so excited about this.
We are too. Thank you.
Thanks, Judy. Appreciate it. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Uh, next, uh, Ms. Quinter and I, uh, essentially brought, brought forward last week. Uh, revised operating agreement for the Academy of Technology Innovation, and we're seeking approval. Uh, or potentially any additional thoughts, um, this week. So, Madam Chair, I'll turn it over to you, or maybe Miss Quinter.
I do have one edit, um, it's more so grammatical than anything else. However, on the original school board operating agreement. Um, under paragraph one. Five, the, um, whereas the party's desire to come together as the regional school board to perform administrative supervision. Uh, it's, it's on page one. It's the second full paragraph from the bottom. So that last and does not fit because all of the rest of the paragraphs are, um, stricken. So the and doesn't really make sense. It would just move into now therefore, so my request would be for a below with a modification of striking through that last and. So Madam Chair, that is the question.
Anybody else have any questions or? Jake, if there's anything you can say? Talk second to that motion. Um, and we have a second. So all those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Madam Chair, I'll send you to approve the proposed college laboratory partnership agreement as presented.
You have a second?
Second.
All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Um, Judy, if you'd like to come back forward. Uh, we have our Title I Elementary School Literacy Implementation Support Grant. I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. I'm very excited tonight to share with you a very, very unique opportunity for Title I schools to participate, um, to compete for a grant, um, across the state. Only twenty schools will be selected for this. Um, all, all four of our Title I schools, um, have prepared applications pending your approval, of course. Um, the grant supports training through the National Institute for Excellence in Teaching, and the goal of the grant is to help schools implement their new literacy program. So the fifty thousand dollars that each school would receive, each school that's chosen, um, would receive would support everything required for the training, as well as stipends for teachers to be trained once teams return back. Um, so each school would have a five-member team, um, that would travel for two-day training, um, out to Arizona, and when they come back, they would train, um, at least twenty members of their staff. And what they've learned in terms of how to collaboratively plan lessons around their new materials and then be able to follow student data and make adjustments to their instructions. So this is really a unique opportunity. All of our schools would like to participate as long as the board's in favor of the application.
And then, any questions?
Wondering whether we are, um, chosen?
We are hoping by the end of May that we would go. We do have confirmation that all of our grants have been received. So pending board approval for those, we can let them know, and we'll let you know if we're chosen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, anyone who'd like to?
Move to approve Title I Elementary School Literacy Implement, Implementation Support Grant.
Second.
All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, finally this evening. Uh, Gary and I will provide an update to you all, and, um. We are, uh, adjusting to, um, two funding realities. Um, one is. Uh, the difference in the local contribution versus, uh, the improved school board budget. And I'd also like to remind the board, uh, that we are still awaiting a state budget. Uh, the governor is, is reconvening the General Assembly on May the thirteenth. And they have set a date hopefully to pass a state budget on May the fifteenth. Um. That adds a extra layer of. Concern for us. Uh, we believe that we will not see, um. The level of funding that we would hope to see from the state, so we believe there will have to be, uh, likely additional cuts. Um, however, this evening, uh, we, we really do need to get working on getting contracts out to our staff. Um, folks want to know that they have work for next year, and certainly we need them. And so, we have a difference in the operating fund, as you all are aware, five eighty-one, one seventy-eight. A difference in the capital fund of a hundred thousand, uh, to total six eighty-one, one seventy-eight. So I am here this evening along with Gary to present, um, what we believe are, um, the, the, the least of the evils, so to speak. Um, anytime you have to cut, uh, it is never what you want to do. Um, so in order to find, uh, five eighty-one, one seventy-eight, uh, within the operating budget, trying to leave as many building positions in place, uh, that we need. You see the proposed cuts and the cost. Um. I am hoping that the state budget isn't massively detrimental. Um. It is, it is possible that we might have to look at more potential building substitutes, and that is not something we want to do. Um, but it might be something we might have to do, unfortunately. Um. However, this is our recommendation, um, to bring forward at this time, and we believe that this is. Overall, the least direct impact to staffing and support at our buildings. Um, it leaves our instructional assistants in place. It leaves our student support coaches in place. It leaves our, um, teaching positions, uh, that we need in many areas in place. Um, a host of other topics, but those are the primaries. Now, is there anything else, Gary, that I might be missing?
Assistant Principal?
Assistant Principal at Locust Grove Middle. Um. The ability to provide an extra, uh, one percent pay, pay raise to our teachers. The ability to withstand the cost of health, health insurance increases, um, so we do not have to pass those along to our employees as well. Um, and so. It's never exciting to bring this forward, however, we do have some new realities, and so, Madam Chair, members of the board. Um, and thank you, um, Ms. Harrington and Ms. Anderson for coming to meet with Gary and I earlier in the, in the week, last week. And so, I'm here to answer any potential questions, uh, but this is our recommendation coming forward.
Questions, anyone?
I guess I'll kick this one off. Um, so I had some questions about. I know I reached out to both of you about what the typical ask has been and what's been approved, um, over the last decade, and so this does seem. Somewhat on par for the course as, as historical records show. Um, I did receive some information that, um, actually from, uh, Mr. Warkeys. Um, seeking clarification on what they thought was, was appropriate for our budget. Um. So aside from reducing a hundred thousand dollars from the requested five hundred thousand dollars for the waste lot of repairs in Locust Grove and head start building demolition at Oregon Barbara Elementary School. They had said that they thought this estimate, this request was estimated higher than necessary, so, um. That's something that I'm, I'm planning on sharing with you guys. Um, I, I don't know that I'm ready to vote on this budget tonight. Um, I believe we got the, and I know this has been hard work, but we got this Sunday. Um, so I don't know that I've had enough time to really dig into this, um, especially with my lack of financial expertise, so, um, I'm trying to do my due diligence with that. Um, I do know that one of the big things that I am going to be a staunch advocate for is the. the director of CTE program. I think that's something that the community wants and is expecting. I think that this is a direction that we need to be going in as we're looking at the lead later, right, on capital improvements and the plans for that moving forward. I think it's important to have someone in place so that way we can coordinate the transition from what we have to where we're going to be. I think that we need to have somebody who can be that point of contact that doesn't wear a million hats. It's very difficult to juggle multiple different things in the day and I don't think it's fair to lay that all on one person. So as far as budget's concerned, I'm in the fear of saying that we fund the director of CTE. And I also have a little bit of a heartburn over removing building substitutes. That's one of the things that I am also concerned about. Where the other cuts are coming from, I'm not sure, but I'm willing to share the information that I received with you both as well. And I don't know when you're expecting approval. Hopefully it wasn't tonight, probably was hoping for tonight, but I don't know that I'm prepared to vote this evening on this.
Any more questions for Gary?
I appreciate the information and the time and the effort that the superintendent has taken and the director of, the executive director of finance operations and everything else to do analysis and to do their best to ensure that the cuts that are required to be made based on the county, cuts that have been proposed to our budget that we had presented to them. I think that we have taken good effort and made, made the decision to make these reductions as far away from the classroom as possible. And I think that most people would prefer to do that if possible. In addition to that, the three additional positions that were included at the end of the conversation prior to adopting our previous budget and were in effect not in alignment with the needs or the recommendations of the superintendent or his administrative staff, that those will be again appropriate things to cut from the budget at this time because they are not directly impacting our students or our teachers or the education and instruction that is being given at the sites. So I understand why these things have been looked at. As you know, the three positions, we did not have significant conversation about those prior to including them in the budget. I would love to not have building substitutes included on here. Or maybe Dr. Horneck can just give a brief little overview of what those critical positions do provide. But I am definitely ready to support the recommendation of the superintendent and adopt this this evening.
Yes, I would add, to me, the building substitutes is the greatest grief because I know what that means to our regular teachers when they don't have a building sub to call on and they end up getting called during plenty of time and not having that time. The director of CTE, I really do believe is an important position. However, I'm not willing to hold up the budget for that position. I do think that all of us agree it's an important position and that maybe it's just the timing of it needs to be different. And we have combed, I have too, because I'm not, you know, Mr. Hornick, but I've asked a million questions and financing budget is not my thing, but I did comb through those Excel files and I honestly don't know where else we find five hundred eighty-one thousand dollars. And maybe, maybe the state will surprise us.
That'd be great.
And if they do, then these are things that we can always bring back. That's what I think.
Yeah, the, I said this before when we had our conversation, I don't disagree that a director of CTE is going to be something that we're going to need in the future. I absolutely don't, I just don't, you know, to, not to reiterate what Ms. Dawson said, but you know, maybe next year. I know one thing I'll never vote for, the heartburn for the building substitutes, you know, we're talking about, Ms. Dawson just brought up, you know, teacher planning and things like that. Well, you know, we listen to the young man get up and we're cutting your club time, correct? Yes, we're cutting your club time because we want to have substitutes because the teacher that's supposed to be coming in, that's a direct impact. That is it right there. That's why. It's not because the teacher doesn't want to do it. It's, this is it right here. So it's heartburn. But at the end of the day, we get two plus two is four and we get funded what we are and I'm ready to move forward as well.
I have another additional question that I forgot to bring up. How much of the funds per year do we typically not use? Because that was also brought up previously that we never use our full budget. So is that accurate or?
That does vary from year to year and a lot of that has to do with unfilled positions. Again, as we've been dealing with, that's really since the pandemic. That's where the majority of that has come from. We have, my understanding is we're filling that at excellent rate at this point. So hopefully that is over with. But again, also anytime you do that, if you say, we do have what we call a higher differential built into the budget. And so what that basis is on, if we have a veteran teacher leave, then we hire a younger one, or if we have those unfilled positions, we already have a number for that in our budget. So if we go above and beyond that, we're essentially taking positions out of the budget. So if we've.
We're betting against ourselves.
Correct. So if we fill those positions, then coming the next year, we no longer would have those positions available. So I think that'd be a big risk to go much further than we are now.
The question that I have, if we're waiting on, we're still obviously waiting on the statement.
Yes.
My question, would we then get a revised, revised budget?
Yes, there will be a revised, revised. Yes.
Well, keep in mind, so if the timeline holds and the fifteenth is the vote, it generally takes the Department of Ed seven to 10 days to create the capital. And so if it happens on Wednesday, seven days goes to Wednesday, the 22nd, right? And if it's a few more days past, say you're talking Memorial Day weekend. So it's theoretically possible that it is super late, like Tuesday after Memorial Day when we could be receiving a capital. Unfortunately, that is not feasible for us. We need to get contracts out yesterday and we want to have them back because we don't want to extend that into the summer and trying to figure out who is coming and going. So we get really put in a bind as far as, again, this is part of the difficulty with school finance, with various funding streams and in this particular instance, a state budget not being complete. So we have to use our best estimates as far as where we stand with the information available. I'll go back also to your question on Ms. Quinn as far as money at the end of the year. So most of it, like Gary said, comes from vacancy savings and attrition savings, which we conveniently call a higher differential. Another one comes in when our ADN goes up and we bring in 40 or 50 more students than what our capital was based on. Now you have an increased revenue stream that you didn't build your original budget on in April or March or whatever it was. So that is another area where you get sometimes an increase in funding that you did not base your original budget on because you're working on your best estimate of what the average state membership is as of March 30th generally and September 30th. March 31st.
March 31st, yes. And another one is sales tax. I mean, especially during the pandemic, everybody thought, okay, everything's going to crash and you know, so they adjusted sales tax way down in the state. And it turned out we got substantially more in sales tax. So you know, it's, there's a lot of moving parts and you know, so it's difficult. I hope, I guess what, I hope we're not online, Doug. What we're really, I think, trying to do here is to show where we're at now. And we, there's no positions that are currently filled would be affected. And so we're thinking if we could, if we're at this point and we could get this much okayed, then we can move ahead with contracts, we can move ahead with getting the current employees, get their contracts and get them signed for next year. So I think this is more than, in my opinion, this is not just a, just approve a budget right now because we don't have the full budget, because we don't have the state. But this is a point in time where if we agree on certain items, then we can move forward. So is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And then I have one more question. The five hundred thousand dollar wastewater repair and head start building demolition, you guys feel like that's a fair assessment that we had put before the orders of advisors with our initial budget?
Yes.
Yes. Doug is here and he can speak to that as well.
I'm not doubting that, I just wanted that to.
Yes.
To be clear.
I would just add, thank the chair and Sandy, Gary, Dr. Hornick. Budget, time of year is time consuming. It's a lot of time. So I want to thank all of you guys for doing that. That being said, I would like to make a motion to approve 2024, 25 operating budget.
You have a second? No second. All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Nay. For the community.
Thank you Gary, thank you Madam Chair, members of the board. And as stated previously, one thing we do not like to do is bring forward recommendations and seek approval, but this one is a little bit unique because of the timing of when we received bids back. We were anticipating a week earlier and I believe if you correct Doug, some of the vendors said they needed more time in order to get their information to us for this particular topic. So I will let you take it from here regarding the Gordon Barber roof replacement.
Thank you, Dr. Hornick. You're exactly right. The original bid date was the previous Friday and only maybe one of the contractors requested more time. It was a fairly complicated bid where we were looking for if possible a metal roof to go on the main section of the building at Gordon Barber. Fortunately, the architect designed an alternate fallback position where the metal roof either exceeded our budget or if we did not receive any bids on the metal roof, that we would have the price for replacement of the existing EPDM rubber roof with a comparable material. And that indeed did happen. We received no bids on the metal roof, but we received four bids on the rubber roof. The lowest bid of the four was Wesley Service Roofing and Sheet Metal Company out of Charlottesville and they had a bid in the amount of five hundred thirty-three thousand one hundred nine dollars. And since the bid came in just this past Friday, we're of course unable to get it on the previous agenda, but at the same time, there is a time of the essence element to this thing. So we want to get the roof started early during summer break so it can be substantially complete by the time the students come back. So you know, I've got the explanation here about all the leaks we've had. I won't go into that extent right, but the roof is in dire need of being replaced and we're happy to be able to replace it with the EPDM. I would also point out that the EPDM material will have a 25-year warranty and therefore will match our solar panels that we put on there. So we do request the approval this evening if possible. Any questions or comments from the board?
Mike, my question, you kind of answered it a little bit. So we have solar panels already on that roof?
No, 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 no. But the new roof will enable us to put solar panels on there and have the roof be covered by the same warranty.
Okay. The metal roof, what warranty would we have on that one?
That would also match a 25-year.
Okay. So you're comfortable with the replacement of this?
I am.
Okay. Dr. Hornick?
Yes, sir.
I guess my question is, have we got any idea why they wouldn't vote or bid on a metal roof and prefer the?
I suspect, I've had a little bit of feedback on that, that the two factors were, one, meeting the schedule. We had acknowledged that there would be no way they would finish the roof during the summer, but our hope was that they would be able to at least put the trusses on and the heavy structure during that time period. And they may have thought that was difficult. And I also believe that the cost, the complexity of the roof, the cost probably ended up higher than what was known to be the budget for the project.
So there was additional structural work that needed to be completed with the metal roof process?
Yes, it required trusses, so we would have a pitch roof.
Would anyone like to?
Move to approve recommendation for award contract for roof improvements at Gordon Barber Elementary School.
You have a second?
Okay.
All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board. We'll get rolling, Doug.
Sir.
And that's all for this evening, Madam Chair. Thank you very much.
Board member comments. Are there any comments or questions? If we finish off the night?
If I could go, that would be all right?
Your time today.
Okay, there you go. So two quick things. I want to recognize Yvonne and who helped you with volleyball on Friday?
Oh, no, it's not me. It was Jen Fox.
Jen.
And Jennifer Clatterbuck.
Jennifer Clatterbuck.
And Donnie Brooks from the high school.
Donnie. So some of us, the chair actually participated, so that was fun and so did the superintendent, which was really fun to watch. But I just wanted to say, you know, being from here a long time, to see that building full of all of the different schools represented with friendly competition going on, it was, it was a terrific event. It really, really was and hopefully you will continue to come up with those ideas and empower the people whomever ran it. But it seemed like a complete team effort across the board, so kudos. It was, it was, it was really fun to watch. It really was.
We've had several staff members reach out saying thank you, can we do this again at the same time next year and what are you doing, what else are you going to put together? So I have a feeling they've got a list.
I made a suggestion earlier today, Dr. Hornick, that the.
You can play.
The winning team has to compete against the actual volleyball team.
I will work on that.
I think it would be a good, I think we'll get lots of people there.
Who's the winning team? The SROs and the chair.
Yeah.
Will never hear the end.
Be invited as a joke. These guys will be terrible. What's it like them?
Well, I'm on a timeline, it's all give and take. So the chair and I sat on a subcommittee for CTE and CIP, so just, I'm extremely excited to announce tonight that we have a tentative agreement on a conceptual. that we have a tentative agreement on a conceptual idea of a new CTE facility to come to Orange. So it is very, very exciting. We still have a lot of due diligence to do, a lot of things to work out. But you know, we have the support from our subcommittee on the supervisors. We come up, we came up with some numbers, ran some numbers, have some really, really good ideas. And we wanted to share with everyone tonight some of the ideas that we have. And I want to open it up to any questions and see if the Chair has anything to add as well. But to bring CTE to Orange with these new programs is a game changer. It really, really is. It will make all the difference in the world for a lot of these young people moving forward. So we're looking at about a thirty thousand square foot facility on campus. So outside of that, going into getting long-winded. Any additional comment?
No, I mean, I think, I think it's a great step forward. I think we're definitely moving in the right direction. Obviously, nothing, nothing around here moves quickly, except for the budget. But it definitely is, is very exciting. And you know, we've also reached out to our architectural leader in our CTE program, Ms. Jamerson, inviting her and some of her students to get involved on how this conceptual idea may look. And just giving their feedback, what they would like their school. So it helps them through the process.
Perfect, perfect. Anything from any of you?
I have a question. Doesn't have a grant, is that a CTE director?
What did you tell us for next year?
It's welcome news.
It's terrific. It's very, very exciting news.
Do you have any idea what type of programs will be put on in this new CTE building?
Well, and, and I'll, the Chair and I spent a whole lot of time talking to a number of people. And I think all of us spent a lot of time talking to the community and what are the needs for the community. So the trades are the big one, carpentry, electric, HVAC, and automotive. You know, that was, you know, there was kind of goal priority one, you know, one A and one B. You know, one A was to provide new programs to give us our young people a fighting chance out in the workforce, improve our workforce here in the county, which is something that we need to do from our perspective. And then the second thing is just alleviating some stress from the high schools. Most, most of the teachers and everyone sitting on the right side over here know we're overcrowded at the high school. We're at about ninety-eight percent capacity. So these, this accomplishes both of these goals.
I would just like to thank you both for the time and effort that you've taken to really look into this deep, and looking into it and getting that feedback from the community and staff and everything. Because I think it is very important that final product does provide what they will need to continue going forward in an excellent CTE program. So this is great news. I know that there's a lot of people that have been waiting to hear it. And I'm thrilled that we will have this going forward before we get the CTE director. But that still is in the path going forward. So that's also wonderful. And just again, thank you for your time, for your effort, for your caring and for your willingness to spend the time to do it right.
Thank you. Dr. Hornig, anything to add?
No, sir.
You're good?
As it's coming up next month, I wanted to flag this for you all. Our next subcommittee meeting on June twentieth at eleven thirty AM virtually. It's been great so far. That is my thing and Sandy and Dr. Hornig.
Yes, ma'am.
Feel free to disagree or agree. I don't know if you have gotten the chance to speak about the county. Or if not, if you may, I'm in the jail. And then I wanted to address public comment. I'll be brief. And I want to say, moving forward, I'm going to use my best judgment, call points of order when I see an issue. I feel like I try to do that, but I'm not perfect and no one is. So I want to make that clear. But I also, I forgot until it was actually brought up in public comments tonight. With the newly passed notes, I thought we were going to read something before public comment. So we could make sure to do that. And then since it's been brought up in two different meetings now, as far as email requests, I do read all of the emails that come through. But typically I only, because there's usually a number of them. But I do reply when there's a direct question or when I can assist something in particular. But an email that I received, I mean, first, since it's come up twice, it was more of a statement than, in my opinion, than anything else. So that's why no reply was submitted, but just wanted to clear that up. But I do do my best to try to communicate with anyone who reaches out, so please continue to do so.
And thank you. And I apologize that I did not read it. And because everything was.
Just brainy, so.
Switched around tonight. It wasn't, it wasn't my top priority, unfortunately. But yes, I will make sure to really try and comment next week. Anything else? Good?
I would like to just mention in regards, kind of the same subject that you're talking about, Chelsea, of public complaints, parent complaints, other things that are either sent to individual ward or the ward as a whole. I do not think we have a designated person that will respond. We've discussed being able to respond for those things that are within our own divisions to their own districts. I do believe that we also are in agreement that whoever takes the time to write something deserves to have at least a response and a recognition of that. So I know that I will do my best to respond to emails, even if they don't necessarily come from my division. What I won't do is engage on social media. So if parents, community members, anyone have a complaint, please, please send us the email. Bring it to our attention so that we can look into it. Those things that maybe have not been responded to, I also want to just acknowledge and hopefully help you to feel a little bit more at ease. When we do, when I see an issue that potentially is a concern, staffing concern or other type of on-campus concern, always touch base with Dr. Hornig to make sure that the appropriate actions, research and feedback are being taken care of at his level. These are things that we do not directly provide a final answer to. But we do want to make sure that we feel comfortable and are assured that these things are not just being ignored. Know that when those concerns are brought up to us, whether it's here in public comment, whether it's a letter, regardless of what that is, they are looked at, they are researched. And sometimes we just are not able to provide you a specific answer relative to actions that are taken.
I'm going to adjourn. Have a good night, everyone.